I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record showed that all board members are present. There are no citizens' comments. We'll move on to reports. Board member committee reports. Start with Melissa.
Only thing I've been to since then, or since our last meeting, was the kickoff day at, I think that was last Wednesday, which was super fun and a great experience. And then I also went to the welcome night for the ninth graders, and that was also really cool. I was there with Heather Sorenson, and we talked with families about the career academies. And we even talked to a person who their oldest, I think, was graduate, was going to be graduating from Cambridge, I see any this year, but they have enrolled their, the next whatever, their, another one of their children here because of the career academies, like specifically because of that, because his interests are not just, you know, maybe college bound, and they want him to have more of the opportunities. So when he left, we both did a little dance. But yeah, it was really awesome, so.
Yep. All I had was the all-staff kickoff also, and then we had finance.
The all-staff kickoff was the one?
Last one.
I also did the all-staff kickoff and had agenda planning, and then I met with our two school board reps following their training. Chad?
Yeah, the agenda planning last weekend and finance today.
Don?
I had the welcome to the kickoff for the teachers and then the high school ninth grade open house.
Eric?
Just attended a couple of open house events and then finance committee.
We have two new student school board reps. We have Lena Whitney, which is on our side, and Ellie Lynch in three. I've asked them to say a little bit about themselves, so let's start with that. You do what I mean. I'm Ellie Lynch, as you all know. I'm involved in a lot of activities in the high school, president of Rio Club and SAD Club, which is Students Against Distracted Decisions, E-Club, Environment Club. I'm also captain of the speech team. I run cross-country and track. Yeah, and I love nature, and I'm happy to be here.
My name's Nina Whitney, and I'm involved in student council, obviously, and then I volunteer my free time at the hospital and for other like small things like suicide prevention and stuff like that. I just really enjoy spending my time with people and helping other people, and yeah.
So would you like to talk a little bit about the training that you both went through?
Yeah.
A few weeks ago.
We, I don't know what the training was called exactly. What we got, first, we started off with like kind of what our role was as student school board reps. We talked about how to be involved, how to stay active in the community. We also did like a mock board, so how school board meetings run, what are we supposed to do, what are we not supposed to do, kind of the adequate on school board.
I think it's a really great opportunity to see how other school boards do run their stuff too in different states and stuff, because we got the other committee to meet with like a ton of students from different states, and we got to see like their voting rights at their school, and like we got to see the kind of like topics they wanted to bring to their school board. And I think it's just very interesting to see different perspectives from different schools in different states, and just like the things that students did want to bring to their schools to make it better.
All the ideas come into that.
It was very interesting.
Well, I know that you both were not at the first day of school today because upperclassmen were not there, but Ellie, you did links today.
Yeah, I was a link leader this year, and so all the link leaders came. We introduced the freshmen. The new principal and vice principal did a little introduction, welcoming them, and then us link leaders, we sat down and like we played a lot of fun games. It was really fun. We taught them like what, like lunch line to go to and like what's the best lunch food. Because there are better lunches. There was a lot of like creative games. It was fun to see people really like come out of their shell. Like there was a girl who was really shy, but towards the end she was looking like she's having the time of her life. And it was really cool to see that happen, and I think hopefully tomorrow with the first, first day of school, I'm really excited to see them around the halls and see their faces light up.
Good, good. Well, I want to welcome you both to our school board, and we look forward to working with you in the next year. Great. Superintendent report.
I just going out, their opportunity to meet with and work with folks from other states across the country reminds me of my opportunity to be nationally certified superintendent. And just to give some perspectives, there's quite a few school districts that their superintendent is actually appointed by the mayor. I mean, that just gives you such a diverse idea of how different, you know, states work and their role. And some school districts are run by the city council, if you will. I mean, so there are just a lot of differences in the different states that we have. I too was at the district welcome back event. Appreciate, you know, everybody's participation in that. The last couple of weeks have been exciting for us as always, welcoming in all of our new team members to the district now two weeks ago, with several new additions to the team, and that's a very important week for us. Last week's very special that we were able to bring everyone that has different roles and responsibilities to the district together. We certainly had, the way that we've organized it, and it seems to work well, is Monday is what we call the classroom day. We just try and allow our team members to focus on getting their classrooms ready, because we know that's probably where their mind is at. The next day, Tuesday, is the building days where the principal and the leadership team at the site has an opportunity to shape the vision for that site. And then Wednesday, of course, is the district day. That, you know, my role as a superintendent is try and bring everybody together, set the tone, big picture on where we're at and the direction that we hope to go. And a big part of that messaging was this whole idea of leveling up, trying to take us to that next step from being a really, really good school district to a great school district. The infrastructure, the systems are in place. We have the mission. We have the team. We have the plan. Now we need to execute. We need to implement, and we need to increase our expectations for student achievement and to try and prepare all of our students to thrive in the world outside of the walls of our school. So that was exciting. Today, first day of school, of course, you know, I need to find some wood to knock on, but you know, it was by all accounts, very, very good day. One of the most worrisome pieces is always transportation and getting all of our students picked up and dropped off where they're intended to be. Some issues that we had trouble shoot, and we need to continue to improve on communications is that, you know, we sent multiple communications out for families to sign up for transportation, and you know, we were getting lots of new signups on Sundays and Mondays and even today, which of course is kind of tricky when it's Labor Day weekend, and the Palmer staff and other staff have already probably put in 60, 80 hours a week of work for the week, right? So I think we just kind of, I think we did a good job with that. Tomorrow's going to be the real test. We're going to bring in, you know, almost double the number of students. The high school will be full. Middle school, I think, is going to be full tomorrow, intermediate, and then primary.
Primary will have still second grade, and then in, on Thursday, it will be second, first, and half okay up until we have full kids September 13th.
And I did have an opportunity to be at the primary today. It's a very busy place because it was scheduled meetings with families and teachers, and they did lots of work with the students to collect data, to prepare, to use data to drive educational decisions into the classroom. I do want to acknowledge Principal Sarah Markshausen's presence here. You will see her quite a bit more at our meetings. She, and I'm very happy about this, is moving forward to that next step in her career to get her superintendent's license, and she's putting in her hours. And I'm just proud and thankful to be, I don't know what I'm called.
He's my mentor, supervisor, all in one.
And I think it's really nice, because we have a strong tradition where I was able to do that for Superintendent Dan Voce, who is now in Morris, doing a strong job. Certainly Principal Muckenhern, who is now off to be a superintendent. I think that really speaks volumes about our district, is we have some very strong leaders, and as much as we hate to ever lose them, it's really nice to see them reach their professional goals and potential and help them kind of get to that next step. So you'll see Sarah around. So I think with that, I'll end my remarks. You certainly can ask me any question that you like, but it's a good, it's a good day. It's a good day to be a Tiger, and we're happy to be ending our first day with our grade school board. So that's all I got. How's that for shooting from the hip? Which is what I always do.
Does anyone have any questions for Ben? Then we'll move on to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion made by Eric Minks. Second by Chad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll discuss an act on previous board meeting minutes from 8:15. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Motion made by Deb. Second by Don. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to approve the consent agenda as it's presented. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Eric Minks, a second by Chad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. But then we'll move on to number nine, the information part of our meeting and the video scoreboard. So Michelle.
We just talked about this in finance. So our gold partner and silver partnerships for video scoreboard advertising, we did sell all of those last year. Last year, we tried to reduce the cost. We actually didn't get to the bronze partnership piece, the selling piece, until mid-school year. We reduced the price, but we really didn't sell any last school year. At the end of the year, we had one person tentatively scheduled for this year, and this year we've got about three. But of those three, two of them would prefer the silver partnership. So we started looking at the bronze and wondering what we could do with that to make that more sellable so that people would like that. We thought the live stream would be enough, but people really want their logo on something in front of people. So that's why they want the scoreboard. So the, we are recommending that we get a bigger price point change. So the silver is at 1,500. We're recommending that we change the bronze to 1,000. And then they'd get two season passes, just like the silver, but their logo would be put on some game programs. We wouldn't be able to put, if we sold all 20 of them, we wouldn't put, we wouldn't be able to put them all in the game program, but we would be able to rotate them through our game programs. So right now, gold and silver are on all of our game programs. We would add the bronze level. And right now, I think there's four, three, and then one. Yeah, I think there's four bronze, tentative bronze partnerships. The fourth would probably fit, but if we get more than four, we would have to go to a rotating piece because there's only so much sheet of paper. The other thing, and this would be for all levels, and probably doesn't need a vote or anything, but just thanking all of the people who are advertising with us in an announcement at the events. So at the basketball games, at the football games, that kind of thing. So we do have this under action later on, but do you have any questions? Finance have anything to add?
I guess, I mean, one thing we talked about was the number of panels. So you mentioned you weren't sure about the cost of those.
Yeah, we did talk about possibly adding silver partnership possibilities. Darren was going to look into the cost of that, and probably because we started this year, it wouldn't be something until next year anyway, because you'd have to order the panels and whatnot. But we're going to look into the panels to see if we could add more spaces up on, on each side of the, you'd have to order two because you've won, you know, so it looks balanced. So that's still in process to look up those costs for the silver.
Any other questions for Michelle? All right, then we'll move down to event worker pay. Who's that? Michelle again?
Yes. So we have event worker pay. We approve this every year. We are recommending a $5 change in local officials. Just so you know, we probably use that very little. We use mainly assigners, and then of course, at the varsity level, they come from the Minnesota State High School pool, and they set that rate. But we do use some that our, our local people, and they don't go through assigners. So we're recommending a $5 change there. And then our event workers, you'll see that that change is a little more significant. We looked at the surrounding schools in the Mississippi Eight, and we are quite a bit behind what they are paying for those, for like announcers and scoreboard and clock operators. And so we are recommending in some cases, $20 change. Basically, they're paying $50 on average for evening event. And then the athletic trainer at the bottom would be moved from the activities other $25 an hour to its own line at $40 an hour. We had a contract with a provider to provide athletic training, and they couldn't find anyone to provide that training for us through the contract. So that contract, basically, they backed out of the contract. So Darren's now looking for athletic trainers. They're not very lucrative right now. So are there any questions on event workers?
Are there trainers at every event, every home event, Michelle?
I believe so. And we do have a couple of local people, but they won't be able to cover, you know, all of our events. That's just, there's something going on basically every night, and in some instances, two or three events a night.
Darren's actively working on this. I mean, he's going to do the best he can. We'll see.
Any more questions on that? That's also on the action part as well. Great. Then we'll move on to the CTE facilities discussion.
Well, I can start off just to kind of frame, to frame it up, just to remind, to go back. The board has seen the need for addressing some of our facility needs over the course of the last decade plus. We went through a long process a couple of years ago to get input from the community and put a proposal to the voters. It was voted down. After we reflected on that, the board had asked us to review what the options would be for the priority area, which was a career technical ed area that would meet the needs of our career academies so that our facilities would not serve as a barrier to moving education into the 21st century. And that is essentially what was presented to you last meeting. In addition to that, there was some discussion around the need for a replacement of a boiler at the high school that is near failure, that needs to be addressed, and also a need to replace a roof at the middle school. The middle school was built in 2000, I believe, opened in 2000, which means the roof's probably 2019-ish, give or take. So that we have needs there, and that was part of the discussion as well. We, after that presentation, we asked the board to reflect, ask any questions, clarifications that they might have. I have not received much. Had some small conversations with some board members. I had reached out to WOLD and ICS to discuss the need for something we hadn't specifically talked to them about, which was the need for space for our preschool programming in this building. Just to, I guess, summarize what you already know, we have a long waiting list of families that would like to have their children in preschool, and we can't accommodate that need because we have a lack of space here. We don't have enough classrooms. So, you know, one option that is a potential, and again, this is, this is different than what we talked about last time, is an idea to do some renovation of our student services building, where our ALC is, where we could potentially put our onward program, relocate our onward program in that building along with having the ALC there, which would then free up some space for some preschool classrooms here. So, you know, that's one thing that I had mentioned to them in an email prior to us meeting today. I'm very thankful that they're here. We have representation, representatives from ICS and WOLD. I didn't expect them to come here in person, so I mean, that speaks volumes, that they all made the big drive up here where they easily could have done this virtually, so thank you. While you're here, would you be willing to either come up or stand up or, you know, kind of participate a little bit so we can be part of the conversation? Yeah, and then the other piece is, as we did add the presentation that they shared at our last meeting to this agenda, so you should be able to pull that up and look at some of that if you'd like. So. What, what questions does the board have? What are your thoughts? Where's your head?
Well, I just have, it's not, maybe it's not nitpicky or picky, but in their design, is there a secure entry that comes in by that fax area or like where that? If we wanted to, the reason I'm asking, if we wanted to use that back parking lot for students at some point, is there, is that already part of the design or?
It certainly could be. The, right now, there's not a design. What there is is a space program and a diagram, just making sure stuff fits. If that's something that would be part of the design process to say, hey, we'd like to have students come in and start, we'd like that to be a back entry with secure entry, we would design it that way. So it's not an additional cost. It's just a question of as you go through design, what are the criteria that it has to function around this, we would do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something that we just need to be fully aware of right now is that we haven't even come close to hitting the design phase, right? All of the specific pieces, they, they were looking at square footage and costs associated with that, and there would be certainly some room for movement, I guess.
A good example would be, you know, we're programming about 26,000 square feet for total CTE space. Whether the classrooms are in the labs, outside the labs, adjacent to it, how many we have, where the offices are located, that all gets arranged as we go through the design process afterwards. Right now, we simply use square feet, net to gross factor, to know this is about how large it's going to have to be. We apply code things that we know about, like the storm shelter requirement. We know we'll have to have specific mechanical areas up back dedicated to that so we can budget each of those lineups to make sure that we have enough money to do whatever the project is based on that net square foot program that's developed.
Okay, so I have a question, because I'm really interested in this, is what our options potentially could be for that middle school roof? And what the, what the cost difference would be between what's proposed as a built-up roof versus a non-built-up roof, whatever that's called, a flat roof? So can you speak to the roof?
Yeah, the roof. I don't want to say the options are limitless. They're not. You kind of get three categories. You have an EPDM rubber roof, a sheet of rubber that's laid on the roof. Pretty simple. It's held down by rocks.
Is that what's on there now?
That's what's on there now. And that's the most cost-effective roof. It's the most popular roof in our state, so don't take cost as, as being bad in that case. But it does come with the most maintenance up all over the, over the life of the roof. You can buy up warranties. You can get 20-year warranties, 30-year warranties with the different thicknesses of roof and things like that. So that's the most cost-effective. What I presented or put in the budget that was at the last board meeting, or when we went through that, was a built-up roof. So that's where you have layers of asphalt and felt kind of intermixed with each other. That roof ends up being about an inch thick. That's where you see the, the mops and the smell and all the hot tar and all that. That's, that's a built-up roof. So it ends up being about an inch thick, a much more robust roof. Those you get into the 40 and 50-year warranty style roofs. So one extreme is just a sheet of rubber. The next, the highest extreme is a very thick system. The cost difference is pretty, pretty intense. So a rubber roof, you're probably talking at $12 a square foot. The built-up roof, you're probably around $30 a square foot, depending on timing and things like that. So you're paying over double, but you're probably getting double of the life out of that. So your first cost is more expensive, but in the long run, probably saves you dollars. You can go in the middle with different types of membranes, composites, things like that, and different warranties within it. So you can pick a middle ground if that's what you so choose. TPO is a name that maybe you've, you've heard of. It's a style roof. It's a, it's a vinyl composite roof. Again, a sheet good that is laid down on the roof, but it's white, it's reflective of sun. It provides some good UV protection and things like that, and that's probably right in the middle somewhere. So there are definite ranges to look at. So going back to last meeting, I think we're, you know, looking at that roof being $5 million, because it's such an expansive amount of square footage. You could theoretically cut that in half, let's say, by going to a similar style roof that you have now. So there is quite a range there.
How bad is that roof now?
It's been on the, the plan to be replaced out, you know, the MDE looks, when you submit your tenure plan, they look at the first two years as pretty real, and then they know as you kind of plan things out, they're, they're less real because they are out there, both in, from a dollar perspective and if it's a priority perspective. But that, we've purposely put it in that three-year, three-year, four-for the last four, four years, probably. So it does create some problems for you over the last, you know, handful of years of maintenance. You know, we look at phasing too. It wouldn't necessarily maybe that you go in and put that whole roof on in one summer. That's a lot of square footage to do in one chunk, so we probably purposely cut that up and do it over multiple summers just to get it done, but also then on the back end, when you do replace it, it phases it a little more appropriately so you're not doing one big chunk of roof at one time. So there are benefits to that too. But it is something that, it's been causing you problems, and as you go further in time with that style roof, it'll get more aggressive with, with repairs.
So you wouldn't recommend another? So you wouldn't recommend another push of that, I guess, of putting that on there?
This is an opportunity I wouldn't, you know, looking at your future and potential projects in a referendum, I, I definitely would strongly urge you to consider putting in that style of a project in that bucket with everything else to see if you can take, take care of it that way. If not, you know, the LTFM cycle that you guys are on with bonding, it would be the next thing to me as, as bonds get paid off to be thought of as being replaced. Legislation, we've talked about, just looking at that to be something that can just be a board action. That doesn't mean it's not tax, you know, impact on, on your residents, but at least you don't have to wait for some sort of mechanism to happen, you could vote on it. But that hasn't been approved yet. Hopefully in the next year or two, it does, but that's going to be aligned with the way you need to replace it anyway. So I don't know if I'd hope for that coming down the road.
Outside of mechanical replacements, roofs are often the second most expensive things on any district's deferred maintenance list to take care of.
Roof, parking lots, mechanical. You have just parking lots, you have board action to do that.
Well, okay, let's talk about parking lots. Because in this first phase of parking lots at the high school, the thought process would be, once we, you know, made a decision and potentially had a CTE addition, that we would finalize and finish the rest of it. And that would have to be something we would have to either utilize the same funding mechanism or that, those dollars would have to be tied into the cost as well.
Right.
That's for the parking lot, that would be finished after construction, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, the, the thought was, we didn't know what, what the CTE potential was, so we weren't going to put in a big roof and then, or big parking lot and then have to tear it up for whatever the potential project would be. So I mean, let, to summarize again, the board asked for a state of the art CTE. Okay, that's 25 million. We did present options on what the tax impact would be for 30, 35. And, you know, discussed, you know, we kind of threw that in there even though you didn't ask us because we know those are big needs.
I think that boiler has to be tied into all of this for the high school. I don't see why we wouldn't want, I think, like, and I said this last time too, I think that things people understand are, yes, technology is growing and we are constantly changing. We need to address that. And also, we live in Minnesota, you have to have heat, you have to have a roof. Like, I really think that people will understand that.
Is there more that you, you could add about the boiler? We didn't spend a ton of time talking about that. I mean, we found some recent cracks in some of our boilers that, and I would, I would imagine that's original to the building.
So it was 1964, didn't you?
Yeah. The boiler is original to the building. You've done things within the boiler to make them more updated, replacing burners and things like that and done work on the inside. But the housing itself, if you were to look in there, it would be, it looks like it's old. But all, not all the parts and components within it are old. I mean, but, yeah, that one's a little less, a little less forgiving. It's going to go out on, and you don't, you don't run up there and put a bucket underneath the leak of the roof, right? Or, or patch a, a temporary patch, it can create a problem to, to work around.
How much was the boiler, again?
We had budgeted about 1.75, and you get cost in there to bring it up a little over $2 million.
So it's cheap.
Just like putting a furnace in your house, man. Couple guys.
Just so you know, that's not one boiler, we have.
Yeah, there's multiple, yeah.
There's multiple bi-boilers in the high school that need to be addressed.
So we're just talking about one right now?
No, we're, I'm talking about the boiler room. So it would, it would bring that room up to date. And we would probably look at doing it a little different than what you have configured now to give you a little bit better redundancy. Talking about steam versus hot water, you can't go to hot water, so we probably have to stay with steam. But a steam boiler that's able to convert to hot water in the future sets you up for that because that's what you want to do as you change systems within the building. That's all technical stuff, but yeah. It would, it would get you your boiler room comfortable, just for updated, okay? Just.
All right, so looking at the math, CTE addition, 25 million, boiler, 2 million. Depending on what kind of roof you want to put on, let's say you put on the replacement, you replace with the same roof that we have, that's the most popular in Minnesota, let's add about another 2.5 million, so now we're, we're still just shy at 30 million. You know, we talked about the, the need for the, the technology cost to, to keep that facility up and running on an annual basis, that would potentially be some dollars. And, you know, depending on if the board wants to consider some kind of renovation of that student services to tackle the, the preschool issue that we have.
What, like, what would that entail? Like, I can't picture, like, I can picture the building, but what has to go into that to move onward over there? Does that make sense?
Well, the, the best, the best way I could explain it to you, and I probably can't do it now, but like, can be before, after the meeting or some other time. The onward program is, I think, right on the other side of this wall.
Right there, yeah.
Okay? And what did we say, that's about 1,800 square feet?
1,600.
1,600 square feet. I'm not sure what that total ALC building square footage is.
10,000.
10,000. And I can tell you a certainty that there, that building, in my opinion, is not laid out very efficient. We haven't done much of any kind of renovation to that building. We basically, when we purchased that from the previous owner, that it was set up to be a clinic and a church and probably a bunch of other things over time, it is just as is. So, you know, I, I believe that we could easily get an onward program in there and have a very strong ALC program, as well as we do have our adult GED programming run out of that in some offices for some staff as well. I'd imagine the biggest cost with the onward is, you know, some of the plumbing and the bathrooms and some of that would be your most expensive parts. The reason I can't, so let's just say hypothetically, okay? Because now we're right, we're right up in that 35 million. And we know you have the, the estimated dollar amounts that elders has kind of prepared for you to know what that was. But let's say, what if you just hypothetically said, you know, what if we wanted to move that to 40? You know, what would, are there some other things that the board looks at as a priority area? Or is that something that you don't even want to open that?
For me.
Open that can of worms?
No. I, I struggle with 30 million. I, I think that'd be a tough sell. I mean, I think we just got to do what we need to do. I mean, we want that CTE, that's priority number one. A boiler and a roof. People can understand that, you know, the boilers are 1964. The roof, you know, is 20, almost 25 years old. I don't think we should be adding fluff. I hate to say fluff, but I don't think we can add. I just really, I, it won't pass. It won't pass.
My, my, excuse me, my only argument to that is the, there is, I mean, the community asks for all these other things that we have not been able to provide because of fail, but I don't think the referendum failed because, I mean, I think it failed because of the field house that was added to it.
Absolutely.
And I think if that was left off of it, and we had all those other, and there are so many other needs that we have just ignored, I think if we do it at 40. And, and I mean, and add all these things to it.
It took us how long to get the new primary and that was what, 29, nothing?
29, yeah, 30, right.
I mean, we were instructed by community members on that finance committee that we formed, don't go over 30 million, it is not going to pass. And I don't know that economically that things have changed that dramatically for our community. I mean, I, I just think, you know, people can get, I think people could get real excited about the CTE. And I think they will understand a furnace in a roof or boiler system in a roof. And the price point is fantastic. I don't think we want to push our lucky bar there. And then we go.
That it would be nice to have facilities, excuse me, that was, or the activities. Like that whole, what they had out, what you guys laid out for us. I mean, that's just, that would be huge, that'd be a game changer, I think, for our activities, for the kids, I think for kids a little bit. And if it was only, and if the, yeah, and including live rooms.
Yeah, we need to.
If we could do that within five or 10 grand per million.
But the thing is, we asked them to like, we just want the CTE, we just want.
We got to get that.
The basics so that we can get that.
Just call that a.
The thing that we need to do is, when we got the primary, those teachers were out there wanting it just as much as the board did. And this last time, we did not. This plan that we have in front of us, aren't our high school teachers going to be able to get behind us? Is it meeting what they are wanting? What is there? If we don't have those teachers behind this plan 100%, it doesn't matter if our community wants a CTU, it's not going to pass. Those teachers have to be on board.
I think it's more important to have the families on board. A lot of the teachers don't even live here, they can't even vote for it.
No, but if they're not excited for it.
They can influence, yes, I agree.
And those families are going to listen to those teachers. They're going to listen to their student's teacher because they want that best education that they can give their student.
From the perspective of being at the ninth grade welcome day or evening, whatever it was called there with Heather, there were so many families, there were actually kids also excited about the CTE program, which, you know, it's their first, you know, look around the school and they're actually excited to stand there and talk to us at a table, right? But the amount of parents that were so excited at the opportunity that this programming allows their kids. And we talked about the amount of money you save by not just going, you know, I don't know what I want to do, so I'll just go to college. The amount of money you save by finding out, okay, I really don't want to do this. Or I really do love this. Parents were really excited about it. I think that it will, I mean, as someone with a first grader, I'm excited about it. Like, I think that it will be, I think the community will be excited about it. I think that that does include the teachers, we have a lot of teachers with young kids.
But the thing is, if we can't provide Tiger Club or preschool, those families are going to go to a different district. So then you will lose those families, they're, we just don't have high school, we won't pass just on high school families. We got to think, you know, with this bypass of Elk River, what is that population going to be coming out here, the building? You know, our population is going to be growing. We know that with the, with bypassing 20 minutes going through Elk River, all freeway. And then once you get cerumen done in a couple of years past that, it's going to be straight freeway here. People are looking for land, they're looking to leave the cities. We're going to get rope, are we prepared for that?
I just don't, and you know what? There's so many people in this community that are not going to say, oh, our community's going to get bigger? Well, let's build for it to get bigger.
Well, no, but we need to, we need to provide Tiger Club, we need to provide preschool.
Well, I agree. I just don't know that it's right for this push.
The, you know, when, when we started this next phase discussion on CTE, we, we had talked the whole time that that would have to be a phased in approach, right? We all acknowledge that there are tons of needs. I mean, it, it, there will be very disappointed people that we can't, that we wouldn't be able to make the upgrades to some of our activity and athletic facilities that are more comparable to our competitors in all the other Mississippi A, right? That's how many times have we all heard that? When people go to some of these other communities and they're just jealous of the facilities that those kids get to participate. There will be great disappointment, right? But at the same time, you know, the board passed us to, if we do a phased in approach, then what's the priority area? The board said CTE, that's what we're, you know, discussing around. Yes, we didn't talk about the roof and the boiler, but I don't think any of us can argue that because we're going to have to pay for that regardless. So if we didn't have it tied into this, we'd have to find some other funding mechanism to potentially take care of that issue. You know, this whole idea of the, the preschool, that's somewhat of a new problem for us. It's not a problem, it's a good thing, it's, that's another thing that breaks your heart. Like, not being able to provide that opportunity for families that want their children to be part of preschool.
The long, the LTM funds, could those be used like inside, to do things inside the student center or certain student services building, is that?
To a certain degree. If you have to do mechanical repairs, ceilings, floors, things like that, you have to take down walls because they're deteriorated. You can put them back up in whatever configuration you need to. You can expand the footprint, you can't use it for certain aspects of things, but it could certainly help offset some of the costs.
So there's some options.
Yeah, I would say that there's certainly a possibility that within the next five years, I mean, we could find other funding mechanisms through capital dollars and LTFM dollars to do a project like that. Of course, you know, we haven't seen what the cost would be, but it's, I, I'm going to take a guess it's not going to be crazy.
Yeah. If they move, if you move onward to the student services, does there have to be renovation here for preschool or how is that? Is there more to this story?
To use the space where onward is, to use the space where onward currently is, yeah, you'd have to renovate that to whatever would be moving into there. Right now, it's set up specifically to onward, which is more lifestyle components for the students in that area. So it's small kitchen areas, a couple of small classrooms and things like that to help them with life skills.
So when was the onward space updated and brought that into this building?
2016.
Yeah, when we moved in, yeah.
Yeah, so fairly new, yeah. And that doesn't mean that there aren't other better or more viable solutions. I mean, that's just through us kind of analyzing the space that we have and us wanting to, to get more space for preschool programs. You know, the thought was that maybe we could use, put Tiger Club into the onward space that would free up probably about three to four classrooms in the family center to give us preschool options.
And doing that still requires renovation of the onward.
Not necessarily, we could take a look at that with the Tiger Club and say, okay, what do we need to do in this space and try to figure out what the bare minimum is to have to do that as well. So this is a relatively new topic for us.
Yes, and, and I apologize, I mean, this is something that I, it's just something that we talked a lot about, right?
Well, we've been looking at rentals, but.
Right, right.
It's not so highly customized that Tiger Club wouldn't be able to take a look at and say, hey, we might be able to move into it as is. You know, if the finish is in there, it's relatively recent remodel, so if at all possible, that would be ideal.
So if we, I'm just going to throw a saw here. So if we state of the art CTE wing, the boiler, we cut that roof thing in half, we save whatever's left of that, can we get this preschool thing done? And we're still at 34 million?
Well, I think a big part of the discussion would be how much we would need for annual cost for the technology associated with the new facility. Or the tech levy that we had discussed a little bit.
Although we still have the tech levy still hanging out there.
But you'd be asking for that on top of the.
Well, I think that, I, well, I, I think that that would all, from what I understand, and Jody's going to come up here a little bit to discuss things and she's certainly available for questions now if she's back there. From what my understanding is, is that any kind of a tech levy piece would be tied into the total dollar amount that we would, you know, have as part of this referendum. Because I mean, I think that's something that we can't just poo-poo. Because we can build the fanciest building in the world, but if you don't have the dollars to operate it, then you're not going to be having those programs. So it's just something that we need to think about.
So then.
I think, I think.
Can we accomplish those things in 34.5 million?
I think we'd be getting pretty close. I think we'd be close. I don't know. I think there's, again, I think the, what kind of roof you want to put on is a big issue. And if we wanted to tackle anything to do with renovation of that Student Services building, that would be an issue. You know, the board said, you know, we don't want to go over this 35 million that's presented here. That's, that would be something that we probably would be able to work on and figure out a, a pretty good, strong option. And there might be some things that we just, we'd say, geez, we'd like to do this, but we can't because we want to stay under this.
Deb, you had said 30, is that where you're at?
That's where I'm at.
30 covers the CTE, the boilers, and maybe not the nicest roof.
Right there, dome roof and, I mean, a technology levy, what dollar amount are we talking?
So on the initial that we put out with the costing that you saw last time that showed what impact would be on the taxpayers, we had 500,000. That was just a plug number to start with.
For the tech levy? Is that for one year then?
No, that levy would be for.
For 10 years, so it's order approved, just like an operating referendum, but the maximum term is 10 years.
So 500,000 times 10, or it's one time 500,000?
It's annual.
Every year you would give 500,000.
So for 10 years, that's.
Yeah, but that doesn't, you know, that's not going to probably cover all of our technology. And we were just putting a quick number to it.
So it may be more like six or seven million? Total in the 10 years?
Oh, in the 10 years. Don't have an answer to that.
So if I, if I'm looking at 30 million that Deb's talking around, the $300,000 house would be about $2 a month. 35 million, 300,000 would be, what? Three, close to four.
Less than four.
375 a month. Around 35. I mean, that's a, you can pick your dollar amount, but. Board, we had no intention of the board making a final decision tonight.
Or not, so we don't really need to get that in depth anyways.
But I, I do think that we're going to need to have some direction from the board on doing some work outside of a, a board meeting that we can do with WOLD and ICS and other entities and LERS to bring you back what your desire is. And it might be something that the board wants to delegate to Long Range Planning Committee to do that work outside of this meeting, or if you want to have some other ad hoc committee do that, we certainly can. I think we determine that we would need to make a decision by January at, you know, at drop dead date. So we, we, we have time, but we can't procrastinate. We need to get some momentum going on this.
Well, just for the sake of discussion, could we see what it would, the preschool onward thing? I mean, can we see what that would cost? Can we, can we see those options of middle road roof and, and I, I think it's hard to prioritize. And, and I think I would love to see all the things other than the fieldhouse that we didn't get. I, that's not realistic and we got to move away from that. I agree with Deb on that, that we have to, we've said we were going to phase this, so we're going to have to phase this. But if we can push the envelope a bit, because we have these needs, I'd be willing to look at what that would do.
I think preschool, moving onward over is a great idea because there is a ton of space in that building, just from what I remember going through it last. But just don't know how, how well some of our community will react to doing more than like bare necessity.
But that is.
It is a necessity.
Everyone understands childcare as well.
That's true.
You know, if, if the district could meet more of those needs, I think people can hear that too.
Well, and when we went for the primary, that was very low priority to our community because we really, 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 really wanted to have an early childhood wing on that primary school. Would have been so ideal. The community was not behind it. That committee, the committees that we had, it was not a top priority. So we kind of had to cut a line and it was below it, unfortunately. I mean, so here we are.
So here we are, yes, with inadequate.
And a list, list of.
But it passed, we have a primary.
And a list that would.
It worked.
It passed and we undershot.
No, because we've done that before and they don't pass them.
We then have to go for the moon and ask also the last.
Right, right.
So what do you think about?
I agree with what you said, to find out the cost of adding.
Adding that and transaction levy and those things that we've talked about at this point.
I think we got to see some numbers.
Right.
To make that.
Sure.
You know, and kind of walk through some of this area over the CTE and how that will all play out and.
Okay, so based upon what I'm hearing from you, I basically know what you're asking for, where I don't think we need to have a special committee. You're asking for us to work with these folks to be able to come up with, okay, this is, this is what the CTE option is presented, what cost, which you basically know. And you know that, you know, there's, there's room for some modifications on the design phase and that work would all happen. A dollar amount for the boiler, a dollar amount for what a flat roof would be, the middle, middle ground roof and the built-up roof. A dollar amount for a redesign of the Student Services.
And here, if that's necessary. So or not.
We, that space would be ready to be used, right?
Yes.
And then the tech levy, whatever that.
And then we would discuss that. And then we would be able to just share that with you on a sheet of paper or a spreadsheet so that you would have that information so that we can discuss more, okay?
And then we won't add any word to the list?
Correct, please.
Is that where everything?
Well, I'm hearing right now is that we're going to keep it. Okay, well, I mean, we, we have, we have some highly experienced people in this room that Bill doesn't.
Pressure over there.
No, I'm just saying. I mean, is there any, is there any more that you would like to add after hearing this? Any perspective, any thoughts?
We actually have the line item list, the all-of-cart list, because it was your last referendum. You know, as we have each of those components of the high school of everything we talked about, we can pull those up. So you have that and going back to 2013, when you set the dollar amount at under 30 million, CTE was on the list. And CTE got bumped off the list from a prioritization standpoint and said, let's at least connect those spaces to the high school so we have security, so we don't just send students out in the parking area. And so these things stay on the list for a long time. They're called master plans for a reason because you get to them when you can get to them and when you can afford to do them. And so we have all that information, we'll update the costs and you can move the items around where needed to come up with the right dollar amount that you think will be supported.
You, you have a lot of history and are you kind of on this 34, 35 million dollar cap? Or do you have a feel for that at all?
I don't, because I don't live here. My parents do, I could ask them. But what you did last time is you conducted a survey to find out, well, what's the dollar amount that we think people would support? And then you actually added perspective onto that, then the committee came up with the dollar amount and said, we think this is the right amount. So it really depends on what you hear from your own peers and neighbors and that's where I would start.
No, it's going to be mine. I don't often suggest it, it typically comes up, but you guys have had success with community surveys. And that would answer a lot of these questions because you could ask very specifically if they're going to support preschool, if they're going to support deferred maintenance or CTE. Now, you have to live with what those results are and if you go against that, you have to have pretty strong reasons why. But I do believe that survey gave you some pretty concrete information last time you did it, especially on dollar amount. Sometimes the scope can, can get massaged a little bit, but it'll be pretty accurate.
Are you talking about the, when the last primary school was built? Because this last survey that we did and we used a very strong company to do that, I mean, it showed us that it was going to pass, but we had variables like the pandemic and a few things that kind of probably put it all at a lack.
Yeah, yes, I'm talking more slightly than that.
Part two question.
Yeah, part two.
And that was not part of the survey?
Yes, it was.
The, the last one?
Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was.
It was, yeah, it was part of the survey, just on the launch.
Oh, yeah, on the, on actual, yeah.
But then they had, we had everybody announce Mille Lacs County and the city of Princeton.
Oh, right, the tax thing.
That's, that didn't hurt.
That's what we're talking about, doing it in the first half of the, right?
Okay, is there any other direction?
Whatever to do that, maybe a survey, just to see. Oh, what's the cost?
Well, surveys cost money, I mean, Morris Leatherman was. Not cheap. I mean, so we would have to figure out, we can get some quotes and some things like that.
I think we want to just get an idea on what all of these things are first and then.
Could we, with internally to our teachers, our staff, our families internally, just put out, I know we don't get many results, but just do a, a survey ourselves within what we can do? Maybe if we do a tech survey.
Well, I mean, we don't want to get in a big philosophical statistical discussion on surveys, but I mean, we've talked about this plenty of times, is that people, the only people that tend to take surveys are people that are passionate on one side of the issue or the other side of the issue. And you might not get the majority of people. So I mean, that's something that we just need to, if we're going to do a survey, we need to find out what's the most reliable way for us to get that information. I would say if the, I mean, a serious discussion here at the board table, because we're talking one of these options, you know, might be a dollar increase a month or a $2 increase a month. And if the board feels like we won't be able to pass a referendum to bring our high school, our flagship building, it's the most utilized building up to the 21st century, we don't think we can pass a referendum for a dollar extra a month. That's a, that's, I mean, that's an interesting conversation to have. So if not, then what, what could, what do you think we could pass?
I don't think people analyze it that small. I think they look at the 30 million or they look at the 35 million. They will look at their impact, but.
There's also that big number.
That does influence.
If I'm not mistaken, in your previous survey, there was a question that had nothing to do with what you were building. It just talked about what dollar amount would you support? And you could refer back to that because that would be unfiltered data from 2021, that you could say, maybe this is the baseline that we start at to see what the support was. They do say that once people know what they're voting for, that has a tendency to go up slightly, but it does give you a good context financially for where people are at with no information.
Yeah, maybe we start out with just resending the board the survey results from 2021. See where it's at there.
I'll get that sent to you tomorrow then.
Is all the building automation been taken care of at the high school or is that in the process at LTFM?
It's definitely been updated.
We're in the process. All the controls and all of that is in process. We're on step two.
You still have steam in the building, you know, that doesn't mean the controls haven't been updated, but that's normal still.
All right, do we have a plan?
You're going to, you're going to get the Morris Leatherman survey. That's, in my opinion, the Cadillac of surveys from the last time, you're going to get that. And then plus, you're going to get a breakdown of the costs of everything that you had asked for.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
We'll be in touch.
We'll move on then to a first rate of policy. The summary of changes there, Don, do you have anything to add?
No, the changes are listed. One thing, I think, as a committee, we really try to get the policies out to the different committees that they affect, finance, admin, principals. Just looking for feedback, do you guys feel that's being effective? So you see that before it comes to the board or keep going that route or?
I think you're doing a great job of that.
Just want to make sure that, you know, we try to cover all bases.
I think you're doing great.
All right. Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to the resolution authority, the insurance of refunding bond. And we have our experts in the room.
And just so the group knows, Jody had the opportunity to present this information to our finance committee prior to this meeting.
So is this action?
It will be.
It's in the next part of the.
Yeah, it's just information right now, but it will be action.
Okay, so I will go through and just highlight a few things on the handouts that we already discussed at the finance committee. And then, yes, there is a resolution on the action items to move forward with the authorization of the refunding bonds. So the first chart that you have is the exact same chart that we talked about in August. So this is just your existing debt, the gray bars, and then the purple is the lease levy that you're committed to. So these are your capital and debt levies, not all of your school levies, but a major portion of them. And then the backside of that is the chart, kind of an intermediary step. So we talked last time about layering on some other components, one of which was the refunding. So this just isolates the refunding, so allows us to restructure the bonds, move some of those payments up so that we pay off principal more quickly, maintain the same capital and debt service levy tax rate for taxes payable in '24. And then for taxes payable in '25, you can see we have a little step down and that is where the $500,000 of tech levy comes into play. So the amount that you're seeing when we talked about that $35 million bond issue kind of maintained a level tax rate with the capital project levy at $500,000 a year. So the tax impact for the bond referendum was just kind of the, what the increase was related to the year before. And then the dotted lines on those future years are the savings which represents about $300,000 annually. That savings is not allowed for you to keep for your district budget, but instead has to be passed on as a savings to your taxpayers. So it's very similar to refinancing your home mortgage, with the exception that you don't get to keep the savings for your own budget. You have to pass it on to your taxpayers in the form of lower debt service levies. And then we have financial schedules attached. There's a sources and uses schedule that shows the financing that we expect, the amount of bonds we expect to issue. We expect to get a premium on the bonds. And then the uses of those funds, including the amount that we would need to call your existing bonds and pay them off on February 1st of 2024. We expect to get a premium on the bonds and then, um, the uses of those funds, including the amount that we would need to call your existing bonds and pay them off on February first of two thousand twenty-four. The second page of the financial schedules is your existing debt service schedule on your two thousand fourteen A bonds. Page three is what we expect the restructured and refinanced, um, refunding debt to look like. And then page four is our favorite page because that shows the savings that we expect to achieve over the new, uh, refunding bonds. So the savings is just shy of a million dollars in total with some, uh, moving up some of your principal payments initially, but then capturing savings in, um, those future years, again, roughly at about a three hundred thousand dollar level annually. And then the refunding escrow is the, um, the reason that you have refunding escrow and interest earnings is because some of the short-term interest rates now are at very high levels. So just as you pay a little bit higher on the short-term rates when you're issuing bonds, you can earn interest at a pretty high rate on uh, the investment of those proceeds. So if we close on the bonds around mid, um, November, you would be able to lock into a rate by investing in state and local government securities, which is an allowable investment for your refunding bond proceeds. And then you would have those on hand until the call date of the bond, which is February first of two thousand twenty-four. So you'd earn about roughly three hundred thousand dollars in interest on that investment. It'd be required to be put in an escrow account and that would be available for the call of the bonds on February first. Um, in terms of timing, you do have the, uh, resolution as an action item tonight. And then we would let Minnesota Department of Education know that you plan to move forward with this. So we would send them your resolution and the new debt schedule so that they can get that incorporated in your levy for taxes payable in twenty-four. Because once your proposed levy is set, you can't go higher. So we need to make sure we would get that information to them. And then we would provide a pre-sale report to you, which you've seen, um, as a part of other, uh, debt service financings. We would get that to you as an informational item for your meeting on September twenty-sixth. The, um, savings amount likely won't look like a million dollars because we'll include some cushion in there just in case rates continue to go up. We've had rates going up and down a little bit over the last few weeks. Today they came down just a little bit, but we'll see, um, what they look like once we get to October seventeenth, which is the date that we would take bids on your bonds. We, um, go through a competitive sale process. We've still been getting lots of bids for municipal bonds. Even though they've been at a little bit higher rates, there's been a lot of demands for, a lot of demand for municipal bonds. So that's the date that we would lock into the interest rate on your new refunding bonds, as well as the interest rate on the investment of your bond processes and those state and local government securities. And so that is everything that I have. If there's anything else from the finance committee or anything else you want me to cover, any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer those. Your, the resolution that you have prepared for you tonight is pretty straightforward. Um, just allows us to move forward with the refinancing and also to provide that information to the Minnesota Department of Education for your levy process.
I forget what you called it during, I mean, uh, the change, the time we can re.
The call date?
Yeah, the call date, thank you.
Yeah. So you will have the opportunity to call these bonds again.
Yeah.
Because we generally have an eight-year call on the bonds and these bonds go out for a longer period. So you'd have the opportunity to refinance these in the future one more time and pass on some savings to your taxpayers.
That call date is set before we, before you actually.
Yeah, so one of the things that we'll work with Michelle and Ben on is putting together an official statement, which is like a prospectus that goes out to the underwriters and potential investors on the bonds. And once we issue that document, we'll have that call date set.
All right. Any other, uh, discussions from finance or any other questions, Jody, before we move on?
Hey, thank you.
Nine F is, um, medical advisor agreement and, um, this will be on action next board meeting and Ben will just talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, it's, I think this is an easy peasy thing. Since I've gotten here, um, I've had regular communications with, uh, Dr. Jeremy Peterson, who is a physician, uh, at M Health Fairview, and he has served our district uh, in the capacity of a unofficial medical advisor, if you will. It's important to know that any time that our district nurse needs to, um, get orders for, yeah, medication, what's the thing we're?
Epi pens.
Epi pens, things that we have to have in our offices, we have to have doctor's orders for those. You know, he is someone that advises us and, and help assist us with those. Um, he was a doctor that I leaned on throughout the pandemic to, uh, answer questions that I had. He's provided lots of, uh, assistance, uh, in some of our activities and athletic programs as well. So he's really, uh, served as our unofficial medical advisor at no cost. And he would like to continue on, uh, in that capacity at no cost, right? But we discussed the idea of having a contract through our district and M Health Fairview to have him designated as that. Just so that he, for one, um, I think he has a point of pride for him because he loves the Tigers and he wants, wants, wants to have that official role and support our district. And, uh, two, I think that this will cover him on any kind of liability, those things associated with anything that might potentially come about as him providing guidance and advice to us. Um, we've worked with Mick, our district attorney and M Health Fairview's attorneys to craft this up. We feel like this is, uh, strong viable agreement and it's something that I'm going to encourage the board to approve at our next meeting. And Dr. Peterson has also indicated that he would really love to be able to come and talk to the board and address the board, just in his capacity and what he does and hopes to do for the district.
If he does that, can we ask him medical problems like?
Sure.
Want to do this?
Also, that's definitely.
Hurts when I move my arm.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, uh, we're hoping that, uh, you'll take, you know, take a look at that and, uh, and we'll get him to a future board meeting if you approve that.
All right, great. We'll move on to action. Um, the video scoreboard and I will entertain a motion. Motion made here, Eric makes, seconded by.
Melissa.
Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Does event worker pay have to be roll call?
No.
No. Okay. Event worker pay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the twenty-three, twenty-four event worker pay as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Don, seconded by Eric makes. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The, uh, resolution to authorize the assurance of refunding bonds. Does someone like to make that motion?
Second.
Do we need to read it?
So I'm going to adopt the resolution relating to the twenty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollar general aviation school building.
Oh, millions, a million.
Oh, twenty-seven million, sorry. I'm, I'm reading the context, so if you're with me here. Refunding bonds series, uh, two thousand twenty-three B, is that right? Authorizing the issuance of the safe thereof and providing for credit enhancement with respect there to as presented.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Eric makes. Is there any more discussion? We will vote by roll call, starting with Sue. Yes, Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Melissa.
Eric Strandberg?
Yes. Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. There are no additions to the agenda. I do want to, um, point out that Emily has listed the picture day options and if you want a badge, a scoreboard badge with your picture on it, you need to attend one of those, um, sessions and have your picture taken. Right?
You gotta get all gussied up, dressed up, do your hair, makeup.
And all the future meetings are listed there and I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second by Don, seconded by Melissa. All very good. Aye.
Aye.